Okay, I'd like to call the Thursday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Culver Town Council of Order. Before we begin, I'd like to remind people that this meeting is being recorded and your participation is your consent to be rebroadcast on the town's YouTube channel. Roll call, please.
William Clevenger.
Present.
Jenny Monroe.
Here.
Dana Neer.
Here.
And Stella Richardi and Bo Giddens are absent.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of September twenty-sixth meeting. Everybody had a chance to review the minutes or an additions, corrections?
Should she approve?
Ms. Monroe moves to approve the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Neer, seconds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign. Good. Public concern, anyone in the room for public concern? Yes, sir.
Here, Chesley, pipe myself one. Couple of observations regarding the Dunes project, understanding that construction vehicles have been heading north, Main, is that correct?
North on Main, which, up until the, up until Davis Street, but after Davis Street, no. We do have construction vehicles in town that are non-Dunes related, though I had noticed a few.
So, so they're supposed to, what's, what's their route of ingress and egress?
They're coming from nineteen onto Tamarack into town.
Okay, so two vehicles, two dump truck today and a crane truck going north on Main is inappropriate for them?
If they're theirs, yes, and I will take that up with them and make inquiries about it. Thank you.
Also, with the...
Typically, I'm not sure, Wayne, if that's not an ordinance, we can't really enforce it, right? Because we don't have like a route, we don't have, like some cities in town, you put like a routes for semis and stuff.
We have nothing that stipulates that no trucks allowed, and I'm not going to cite somebody for something that's rape related by statute.
Right.
They agreed to it.
They did agree to it, they...
No enforcement.
There is, they had an end dot approval for heavier stuff. They've asked us at a courtesy that if we do get complaints, to pass them forward, so that's what I'll do.
Well, it's not complaints, just...
Well, I noticed, yeah, sure.
But the other thing is, and you guys probably are totally aware of this, but it came to surprise me, they have a water vehicle, it's a trailer and tractor that sprays down the dirt to keep the dust down, and they're using the city water for that. Is that something we've agreed to, or?
Yeah, they're buying it.
At a better rate than I know?
I know.
Just checking. That's all I had, thank you.
All right, anyone on the line have anything for public concern, utility or ordinance violation?
Just one person and he's not commuting, so.
Okay, next item on the agenda, new, excuse me, new business. First reading of ordinance twenty-four, or two thousand twenty-four dash oh seven, ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the town of Culver for the purpose of certain capital improvement projects.
This is the one we had the work session on, right?
Yeah, this is for the general obligation bond.
Yeah, these, so this is the first reading for the general obligation bonds that the work session detailed. These are coming at the recommendation of Baker Tilly that did the financial outlook for us and Barnes Stormburg acting as bond attorney for us. They are drafting it up as we speak. The order or the timeline for this would be the first reading tonight, and our last meeting of October will be our second reading, and then the first meeting of November will be our third reading. They'll go off there, I think, November twenty-fourth is the deadline for this, so we're going to meet the deadline fine. So we'd like to see this go to all three readings if we can. That way we can have the public, we'll also have a public hearing coming up for the appropriation. Yeah. So that's where we're at on it. And these are for the water improvements, as we discussed, meters and with the water plant.
Yeah, I would make the motion to pass on first read ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero seven.
Ms. Monroe moves to pass on first read twenty-four, uh, two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh seven.
Second.
Mr. Neer, seconds. A discussion, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign.
And then I will also make the motion to pass on first read two thousand twenty-four slash zero zero eight, the ordinance appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of the general obligation bond.
It's moved by Mr. Monroe to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh eight, ordinance appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of general obligation bonds.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Monroe, second by Mr. Neer, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign. Thank you. Old business, second and third read of ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh five, the two thousand twenty-five budget.
I will make the motion to pass the budget on second read and suspend the rules and pass it on third read as well, since we had a five-o vote at the last meeting.
Ms. Monroe moves to pass on second and suspend the rules for third reading, ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh five, the two thousand twenty-five budget, second by Mr. Neer, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign. Second and third read, the parking ordinance.
I'll make the motion to pass the parking ordinance on second read and suspend the rules on third read.
Apology.
That's moved to pass, pass on second, suspend the rules on third for the parking ordinance, so I assume Mr. Neer, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. Thank you. Emergency services.
Yeah, council. Last month, I came to you to request the upgrade for the base rate. Ms. Richardi wanted me to talk to a couple people, maybe get another quote, which I have, but I, I think I'd rather talk about this when she's here and Mr. Giddens as well. So if I could push this till next month.
Especially because of the conflict you had with the age of...
Well, Damon, you... But yeah, so I did get a lot of information, I, I've learned a lot about VHF radio, UHF radio, eight hundred megahertz radios, so I'm thankful that she made me get into this and do a little more research. So I, I will have good news, much better than some of the numbers that I had for you guys last month.
Very good.
But I would rather wait till next month.
Okay.
Anything else, Mike? Okay, good. Fire, Terry.
Yeah, I got a couple things are, are aging tornado sirens, I'm having a little issue with some of those. The tornado siren at one seventeen is down till we get a motor, which I'll look at in a second, and the tower at fifteen B Road is down. And with that, I think I need approval for twenty-six hundred, six dollars for those two sirens to get them back up. Damon and graciously Bob's been letting me use Damon to help work on these. We've, so far, we don't have any labor in trying to figure out why they're not working or what's going on with them, but it's a thing that I foresee, I talked to Marlene about it last year, I said these things are put in in oh nine and changing the battery right now is really not a hundred percent of what's going on, there's more things going on with the aging system. Everybody else in the county has the same situation, and we talked with the chiefs and talking with communications director and what's going on, you know, what's happening with ours, what's happening with theirs, and what we're going to have to do someday soon probably is start looking into the future of how we're going to use sirens in the community. But for now, we can, we think we can get these running for twenty-six hundred, six dollars and eighty-six cents to one of these parts.
Now, does the township pay half of that, Terry?
No, township puts money into our budget every year to help cover the maintenance on them, in which Marlene, two years ago, I believe she upped that part maybe, because I told her, I said it wasn't doing the job, it wasn't enough, we're spending more and more, just got, you know, the money just kept getting bigger than that, so I don't know how that really, I don't know if she has a line item for that or not, but I did, I've expressed it to her, saying, you know, what you're putting, I don't know, but I'm telling you, we're putting more money, just keeps seeming like a thing, because they're that old, fifteen years old.
So it's twenty-six hundred and what?
Six dollars and eighty-six cents for those two parts.
A motion to approve the expense to repair this.
It's moved by Mr. Monroe to approve the expense request with fire department, second.
Second.
Mr. Neer, seconds.
Here, did you find out that they weren't working just by routine drills?
Um, they, we found that they weren't working when we had a tornado.
Okay.
Call that, call that night, we had issues with some of the sirens and not knowing what was going on, and they're not, they were never getting tested properly. Even the town siren here didn't do what it was supposed to do, so we've spent a lot of time with Zach, county level, working on these things so we can get them, he's trying to go, to get us to go a little different way, and I'm not a hundred percent sold on that yet, so I don't have the money to do it, to have them automatically go on. But with that, we have learned and now we're having a every second Tuesday of the month at one o'clock, they're being tested. So when they get tested, it's just like the new muscle, it growls, rrrr, just like that, and the county can read that and say, did it work? And so every time it's tested, this is going, this is going to be data that's going to be building as we build this system to say, did it work on Tuesday, this time, next time it did work on Tuesday, this siren, and so at least we have a background, because before that thing, it's set there, you got tested twice a year. So yes, that we're upgrading on that, trying to upgrade what we can to keep these things more operational, because motors that don't work end up not working, I mean, they set there these.
All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Jenny.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead and call for the...
Yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
I just wanted to ask, between you guys, is there still talk at the county level? I remember at one point they were looking to add a tower on the south end of the county for nine-one-one, because they claimed it was a tower issue at one point, has there been any more talk about that?
In my level, it has came up a few times, but there, the monies have never showed up for it. John Grillick was working on that, and I don't know where he was trying to get money, but I have a curtie thing in the, in the last three, four months about it, but yes, that was conversation. What's wrong with it?
Yeah, yeah.
It's all we're going to work on. They're telling me that it's not a, not, I'm not that guy, my radio goes off.
Yeah, that was one, when we went to the county with that memo, the one here about the nine-one-one stuff, one of the guys, who's no longer with the county, kind of made it out to be like, we need another tower, which is like apparently a million dollars plus.
Yeah.
That's now a year or two.
I don't think that's going to be in the future. Yeah, there's, there's no money there, they were trying to go after it, trying to get private, you know, regular funding, everything I know about it was like, no money. So we did have, you know, we did have issues a few years ago with our radios not going off, we moved out to the city tower, and since then, for the most part, we've had pretty good communications. We haven't had issues like that, like nothing happened. Well, the county owns a tower. Right. But it just allowed them to put it on our property and feed the electric to the internet service service.
That's what's improved things, is that. I just wondered.
Yes.
Like, you know how those conversations get started and they never seem to go anywhere at county level? Yeah, it goes into a deep dark hole and never resurfaces until someone dies.
Then it gets fixed.
Is that tower, Bob, up there by you, that, the county, is that the eight hundred repeater on it?
I believe so, yes. Yes.
That's your eight hundred.
That's eight hundred.
Anything else, Terry?
And yes, I have one more thing. Engine one, the one that we're replacing, the generator went out of it, a new one costs thirty-five thousand dollars. They're spending thirty-five thousand dollars, we're going to spend three hundred, three thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy cents, I believe, to put new scene lights in it that are LED, that we don't have to buy a generator, because the generator is out there, way out there, that's just the cost of the generator, not the installation, because the old lights, most of those are not LED, so they draw a lot of power, that's what the generator actually ran. So switching some of these lights out to make them LED, they don't, they draw up the battery, they draw off the generator, they don't need that much power, and they're better and brighter.
This was the rescue truck?
This is the engine.
Oh, the engine.
Engine one, right, the one we're going to be replacing. It's the only thing that generators use for. Yes, was for the light. Yeah, good move. No way we're going to spend thirty thousand on a generator for lights.
Will that be able to get you the trade-in value that you want, or is that why you're going to go ahead and do a repair, or?
Uh, we're going to do a repair because we have to, we have to have...
While we're waiting on the other truck.
We have to have lights on it, and we wouldn't, even if you were going to sell it, we'd sell that generator.
Yeah.
And switching this over for a cheap, you know, thirty-three hundred dollars, it's all smart. There's no, there's no recourse of, you go to sell it to someone else, you go, I can't do that without that.
Mm-hmm. Make the motion to approve the expense for the repair of the LED light situation.
Ms. Monroe moves to approve the fire department request for lights, chair, seconds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
It's getting broken. I'll do your name.
Give you a break.
Risky there.
Please, Wayne.
Oh, yeah, a couple things. Light of, you know, hire another officer. But I did, this is a, the ad I'm going to print, just wanted you guys to be aware of it, get your blessing on that. See, know where it's at. Everything's based on, because we're close to the end of the year, time is going through the process and everything, everything's going to be based into the twenty-two, twenty-five year, so that's what it's all. That one's okay. Drastically jumped up, it's all based on, about twenty-three, up to two thousand twenty-five, based on the twenty-five budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the advertising for backfilling that portion that you need to fill.
Ms. Monroe approved for the, make moves to approve the advertisement for the new officer, second by Mr. Neer, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign.
And second is conversing back and forth with Mike, because he is in need of a camera for their new roof. I had a quote earlier this year, I haven't filled that camera stuff yet, which probably is a good thing at this point. However, it's going to increase that cost, I don't think it'll be a great deal, and Mike said he wanted to pay the difference, you know, we can work that out with Karen, and we'll just have him install an extra camera, so.
Good.
Probably save a little money in the long run.
But all. And that's pretty much all I want to get ready for the October sixth.
God, that was coming on.
There may be a lot of people, because that's a very popular band.
Pretty popular one.
The band.
The band.
Yeah, I got a lot of people as far as South Bennett. Who is it? Yeah, the S.P., sorry.
Two weeks.
P.S.?
Single P.S.
Yeah, so P.S., Dr. Boyfriend.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were here, last time was last year.
We've had them here before.
Yeah, they were good, they were showcasing at the casino, I believe, pretty soon.
Last year, cord.
Yeah, so it was cold time, depending on the weather, everything, but right now it's looking pretty, pretty good.
That's cool.
Good.
We're working out security with the beer garden and stuff, so. All good, all very, all go well.
I beat my son-in-law in the office chair relay last year. We were the only two people that were in it, because it was raining. I got a goat.
Maybe it can be a repeat this year.
Hope so.
He's got a title to defend. Karen, please put that in the minutes.
Yeah, other than that, I don't have anything, you know, something for me, should have had my monthly to your box.
Yes, thank you. We have anything on the park?
Yeah, we sure do.
Appreciation for what Amber brought to this town. We are currently working on getting the contract lease out for the beer. I'm now learning what that means, and as we keep digging deeper, and Karen keeps reminding me, we are in the process right now of reaching out to everybody, I'm making confirmation just so we don't have communication error due to the transition. I had about ninety-five people confirm today, it's amazing how fast it gets back to you, and it's about beers and not taxes or anything else. So we're going to confirm, the next thing I'm doing is working on the contract itself, we'll put it out, we should, I put a date down, a hard date of October thirtieth, Amber said I could hit November, but it's a good idea to try to get it before that, so we'll be there. Mentioned that we're not doing pier socket Bs, we have reminded them to get everything out by the eighteenth of October, so Tim could go ahead and get those removed for us and get going. Apart from that, Crystal's been doing a wonderful job, and we have a meeting Monday concerning interviews, that's it for the front.
Thank you.
Five-thirty, I believe, did we set that at five-thirty?
Five-thirty, I believe.
That was my memory.
Yeah, I unfortunately have to be at the MPO conference next week. I know you guys have done a fine job interviewing.
Thank you.
Bob, you're next, utilities.
I just got one quick thing, Ernie Swaper will be here next week, so I'd like your permission to sell at the highest bid, the old one, also a UTV that no longer...
I make the motion to approve the sale of those two pieces of equipment.
Ms. Monroe moves to sell the surplus equipment. Mr. Neer, seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Easy, easy.
You. Town manager report.
Quick and dirty. Follow-up on the clock from last week, we've taken several phone calls, went to the original company that was suggested, it's any five hundred dollars to replace a seventy-five hundred dollar clock, and we have to bring the gentleman up from Alabama to fix, excuse me, to replace the parts that were mentioned. That's good money, bad, I think, and Bob and I have been discussing, Bob's located a company with Indiana, it is the Cadillac Service of Indiana Municipal Clocks, and that's what the website says, basically, and they are well-known, I've seen their work. We're pricing it out, but I thought we'd go ahead and package this up. Another need for downtown right now is the lighting, the lighting that was installed on top of the buildings is getting old, there's been some complaints, and I want to try to see if we can't take care of that with some string lighting, something a little bit, I don't know, something better than what we have there. And the last thing is banners, and we've been in discussion about banners, Bob and I are looking at banner poles and banner size, and so I'm going to package those three things up, try to get some bids and some quotes, not bids, quotes, and take a look at the pricing of that. Bob's, I don't know, I'm doing good. Bob's provided me the clock, and we'll work with that, and I met while we were down at, our, over at Fort Wayne, met a couple vendors for lighting and for banners, it was kismet, right? And so got their cards, going to price some things out, and hopefully we can package that together, I thought I'd have a discussion with Marty in the CRC about that, see if we can't maybe move on that. Cosmetics, I was at the AIM convention yesterday with Karen, we did the vendor walk, we did meet somebody that is very promising, the one thing is our personal handbook needs a little bit of work on it, and I know Jenny, you worked on it, you're the wordsmith, but I think just kind of outsourcing it, especially in this litigious world we live in, is a good idea. Karen introduced me to somebody that seems very promising, takes us through it step by step, a six-week turnaround, which is even more impressive. We're going to, we're going to have some conversation with them, probably outsource that, we'll come in front, obviously, and have that conversation later, but I just, it was a great meeting. And the third thing is, apparently, yeah, town managers and clerks across the state of Indiana don't have the working relationship we have right here. I heard from several clerks yesterday, and I'm proud to say that I'm not that bad. It was kind of nice, I met Jonathan and Jenny, and I were all standing in one spot and realized it was like a time capsule of Culver Town Managers. Other than that, it was a great, I mean, it was good to meet some vendors, and it was good to get out, so that's it for town manager tonight.
I think those Main Street purchases are a great idea to get some, kind of launch into the whole, let's focus on Main Street a little, and...
I think it's...
And I like the idea of not throwing good money after an old, you know, a lot of those get replaced like equipment does, and...
We'd like to bring the donors, they have a nice donor plaque on it at the bottom, we can bring those donors into play that gave the original clock, and there's no need to incorporate them in and, and see what we can do there.
And those, like, I, I love the idea of getting those back in working order, something different at last, maybe, they look nice when the block's lit up, but it's been a while since they've all worked.
We're thinking about maybe some string lights, some of those LED strings that can go through there.
We've needed beers.
Personalities down there, there's going to be here. I have no idea what you're even referencing, it's because they have to supply the power.
Yes, they do, and we'll, we'll talk about that. I'm more optimistic.
That's great, I just think it's great.
John, your report?
I have a couple of claims over twenty-five hundred for your approval, the first one is Wyler comes for his clevenger and serious. He's got...
Hurry up, Bob.
He never sees the face of Terry. Terry is talking. Everybody?
Terry Wakefield.
Catch his eleven o'clock, here he goes.
Six thousand five hundred fifty dollars for legal fees, Midwestern engineers, sixteen thousand two hundred fifty for professional services for water and sewer, and then Corin Main, three thousand seven hundred for out of water and sewer, and that is customer support for the meters.
Motion to approve the claims.
Ms. Monroe moves to approve claims over twenty-five hundred, Mr. Neer, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign.
And as Kevin said, we're at the AIM ideas summit, Jenny and Dana were there as well. I had a long week, started with board and directors meeting and Island City Executive Committee on Tuesday, followed by a number of classes, PowerPoints were provided, so I will probably be sharing some of those, there's some interesting ones on property taxes and the impact of property tax proposals by the two governors. There was an interesting class on...
Health Alliance.
It was integrated medicine.
Yeah.
That was really good, and I've got some contacts maybe to reach out to, some, a little bit on AI and ways that maybe, you know, it's, it's scary and terrifying on one side of the, of the spectrum, but at the same time, there are ways that maybe we can automate a few things and maybe take some things off of our plate in the office and make life a little bit easier, so that's, oh, and I did also attend, Kevin came as well, the redevelopment association Indiana meeting, and they had a really good presentation, I can't think of the name of this, the town that presented, but it was a mayor.
Yeah.
But it was, it was a good presentation on a project that they did and how they got it done, so.
That's great, we actually picked up a big source, we're going to both probably read it.
I ordered it.
Great, and then, yeah, it was just on decision-making, and it, it's interesting, I think there'll be some value in it, so it was a good session.
I did a social media one, and I'll send you to a summary note, or maybe copy, Sean, because it's two attorneys that went...
I did the social media one, and I'll send you to a summary note, or maybe a copy, Sean, because it was two attorneys that went through.
It was at the Blizz McKnight?
Yeah.
Yes.
It was really interesting.
Yeah.
Um, and I didn't even realize some of the stuff that we can. Do, and that you can't do, but even us as elected officials.
Yes.
So I'll copy the council too, because there's a lot on there that I was like, oh.
Yeah.
Uh, many of our county officials are violating all of those. I'll send y'all a note on what I learned.
Good. We all have an attorney's report, I guess.
No.
No, okay, consul issues, Mr. Near. Ms. Monroe. Chair has nothing. Motion to adjourn.
Semi.
So move by Ms. Monroe. First seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.